Okay, meeting open 7:03. Carol, go ahead and take the roll, please.
Okay, now we got, okay, Matt Kwaski, absent this evening. Tom Phillips?
He's not here right now.
He's not here, okay. Absent. Jim Carty?
Here and attending remotely from Lexington, Michigan.
Okay. Allison Healy.
Here, attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
Chet Hill.
Present, attending remotely from city of Dexter.
Kyle Marsh.
Present and attending remotely from Dexter City.
Karen Roberts.
Here and attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
Wow Hubbard.
Present, attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
Dustin Wise.
Attending remotely in the city of Dexter, Michigan.
And student rep Charlotte Hawley. Which I did not see earlier. Student rep Eleanor King. Mark is absent. And student rep Aiden Naughton.
Here, attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
Okay.
Okay, so. Did you all ever pick, we never had, you all never picked a secretary yet, did you? Okay. So, you've got meeting minutes in front of you from the May 3 meeting. Excuse me. Do you, I hope you all have reviewed them. Does anybody have any comments, questions? Can I get a motion?
Move to approve the minutes.
Or?
Okay, who did we have?
Jim Carty motion, Karen Roberts second.
Okay, got it.
Um, I have no corrections.
Karen, none? Did anybody else have any corrections? Hearing none. Carol, can you call the roll?
Yes. Carty?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you all. Okay. We now have approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
Carty, I'll move to approve the agenda.
Robert, support, okay.
Who was the second, please?
I think it was me, Karen. Oh, no, it's Dustin.
Dustin?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, any changes to the agenda? Okay. Carol, go ahead and please call the roll.
Okay. Hubbard?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Carty?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
And that's it.
Thank you all very much. Okay. You've got a public hearing tonight. The public hearing is the text amendment to the zoning ordinance for accessory dwelling units. In, I'm sorry. You're considering the proposed amendments to the city of Dexter zoning ordinance to allow for one accessory dwelling unit, also known as an ADU, to be permitted on individual lots where a single-family dwelling is the principal permitted use. The amendment would apply in all zoning districts where single-family dwellings are permitted as principal permitted uses on individual lots, subject to administrative review and approval by the zoning administrator. Discussion and possible action will follow the public hearing. Excuse me. You've got a letter in your packet that staff have prepared. I won't regurgitate what you've already just heard about why you're having the proposed public hearing, but I can tell you that the affected sections of the ordinance are Article II definitions, Section 2.2, Article III, general provisions, Section 3, Section 3.30, accessory dwelling units, that's the bulk of it. Article 10, R1A and R1B, one-family residential districts, specifically Section 10.02, permitted principal uses. And Article 11, Village Residential Zoning District, specifically Section 11.02, permitted principal uses. Excuse me. In addition to ADUs being proposed to be allowed on a, on a single-family zoned lot with a single-family dwelling unit, there are additional amendments established, general provisions, eligibility, I'm sorry, general provisions, eligibility permits and application requirements, and then specific development regulations. You've seen this text in your previous three meetings. All comments and suggestions have been added. Since this is all new text, it is all underlying, there is no strike through. Section, Article II definitions. It's, it's the definition you've heard, you've seen. Accessory dwelling units have, they, they're known by a number of different terms, whether that's accessory apartment, second units, garden apartments, mother-in-law suites, granny flats. Basically, they're additional living quarters. They're located, which are located on single-family lots, and they're independent of the primary single-family dwelling, and they are not used for more than one family. ADUs are separate living spaces. They're equipped with a kitchen, bathroom facilities, and depending on their location relative to the primary dwelling unit, are either attached to or detached from that primary dwelling unit. Or they're located within an, in the interior of that primary dwelling unit. There are three class, three cla, three categories of ADUs that are defined and to be permitted in this ordinance. They're attached where they're either, you can see the different graphics. It's attached as a new structure to the principal unit, or dwelling unit. It's through a conversion of an existing attached garage, or it's a, it's an addition above an existing garage. Excuse me. You have detached ADUs. They are structurally separate. So, you can convert a space above a garage. You can convert a whole garage, or you can build an entirely new ADU. And then you have your interior ADUs, and as you can see, that could be converting a room on the upper or second floor of an existing primary dwelling, or it could be in the basement of an existing dwelling. You've got Article, Article III. I'm sorry, Article III, general provisions, Section 3.30. Like I said, this is the crux of, of the amendment. This is where the guts are. You've got general provisions. You've created a purpose and intent that is very specific. It's based on the ADUs supporting the city's housing affordability goals, supporting the efficient use of existing housing stock and public infrastructure. Providing housing that responds to changing family needs, smaller households, and increasing house, housing costs. Meeting the needs of the residents, providing accessible housing for seniors and persons with disability, and finally, enhancing residential neighborhoods. You've created a very solid purpose and intent, so your foundation is strong. The eligibility permits and application, I'm not going to go through them one by one for you, other than to say, this ordinance clearly sets forth, what is the eligibility criteria in which one can create an ADU? There is an owner occupancy requirement that the owner of the property either lives in the ADU or lives in the principal dwelling. Excuse me. AD, and as far as eligibility, an ADU can be created as new construction, conversion of an existing structure, addition to an existing structure, or conversion of qualifying existing house to be a detached unit, while simultaneously constructing a new primary dwelling. So, a permit, a zoning compliance permit is required before an ADU is permitted. And we've also tied a renewal period to the accessory dwelling permit. And it's a carrot and stick approach. So, once you've got your initial permit, you've created your unit, you don't have to apply to have it renewed if during the renewal period there has been no zoning enforcement complaints or problems. But if a permit does need to be renewed, and it does need to be renewed every five years, that renewal will require an inspection of the accessory dwelling by the zoning administrator. And that ties in with the same rental inspection that you have for your short-term rentals and vacation rentals, and the rental inspection policy that city council is looking at for all rental properties in the city. Excuse me. There is an application in order to get the zoning compliance permit that's done through the zoning administrator on forms that we will create, and it will be subject to the requirements of Section 22.04B, which gives the zoning administrator the authority to do this. There is a requirement that the zoning administrator shall notify by mail all property owners within 300 feet of a property that's proposed for an ADU, and the notice shall describe the nature of the request, identify the property that it's a, that it's subject of the request, including the address and parcel ID, and, and the notice will include information on when and where comments can be submitted to this, to the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator will take that all into into consideration as the review is done. And then you have your development regulations. You've got the conversion of an existing accessory structure. So, if you've got a dwelling unit that's permitted, I'm sorry, an accessory dwelling unit may be permitted in a legal non-conforming accessory structure that was constructed, right now we have a date of before December 31st, 2021. That date would become the effective date of this ordinance. So, just so you know that, it won't be December 31st. So, if the existing accessory structure is more than 200 square feet in gross floor area, it may be replaced or modified for use as the accessory dwelling unit, provided the new or modified structure conforms with the standards and regulations of this ordinance. If you have an illegal, nah, I'm sorry, an illegal non-conforming accessory structure that's constructed before December, or of the date of effective of this ordinance, which is over 200 square feet, must be replaced or modified prior to use as a, as an accessory dwelling structure. And it must conform with this ordinance. So, that way you've got conversions of structures that are legal non-conformities, as well as legal, as, well as illegal non-conformities. Short-term rentals are not permitted, and there is a deed restriction that will run with the land as it pertains to all accessory dwelling units. This ensures that an accessory dwelling unit cannot be sold separately from the principal dwelling unit. And it must, the deed restriction has to contain the owner occupancy requirements within this ordinance, specifically B1C. You've established you've established minimum lot areas for ADUs, and that being 5,000 square feet. And then notwithstanding certain provisions already in your zoning ordinance, specifically Sections 302B and C, the maximum floor area, in other words, the gross floor area of an ADU is, is set subject to the size of a lot. So, a lot area that's 5,008, I'm sorry, 5,000 square feet, but less than 7,800 square feet, the maximum square footage is 600. For lots that are 7,800 square feet to just, just under 12,000 square feet, the maximum ADU size gross floor area is 700 square feet. And a lot area that's equal to or greater than 12,000 square feet, you're looking at an ADU with a maximum ground floor area of 800 square feet. I'm sorry, not ground floor, gross floor area. Setbacks. Attached ADUs are going to have the same setbacks as the principal structure to which they're attached. In a detached structure, it's 10 feet from the principal dwelling unit and other accessory structures. However, if, or that setback can be reduced by five feet if the ADU is constructed with fire-rated walls, and that's in accordance with building code. And then a detached structure, ADU shall be at least five feet from any side or rear lot line, and then 50 feet from any shoreline, at least 10 feet from any boundary of a regulated wetland, and all accessory structures in your ordinance currently have that requirement. Lot coverage, you have lot coverage standards. They're a percentage based on the zoning district. So, maximum lot coverage of a detached ADU is 8% and 10% in the R1A, and then R1B and VR districts respectively. And then the maximum of all structures in those two districts are, including, excuse me, so all structures, including the ADU, are listed. 30% for the R1A and 40% for R1B and VR. You've got regulations for the height for both the attached and the detached. It allows flexibility, but at no time can an attached or detached unit be greater in height than the principal dwelling. A permit is required, and no ADU can be created without a permit. Your application requirements are set forth very clearly without regurgitating what's already been identified previous. And then you have your development reg, I'm sorry. I was rereading the same page, sorry about that. Public utilities. ADUs can use, can be tied to the existing water and sewer leads that serve the primary structure, unless the superintendent of public services determines that using it that way would be infeasible. In those circumstances, where new tie-in or new connection would be required, there would then be a tap fee. But those are probably going to be very few and far between. Then you have design criteria. They have to enhance the residential neighborhood. They have to fit the single-family design standards of Section 304. And the orientation of the ADU, it needs to be done in a way that provides privacy, not only for that ADU, but for the, the principal unit as well as neighboring units. And you can see the language that's changed in the, the two different zoning districts so that these can be permitted principal uses. As far as text and analysis, you've seen these criteria before. You've had documentation from the Dexter Housing Task Force, which specifically looked at finding what, what were the housing challenges in the city? Excuse me. Two questions that they grappled with. Why is there a shortage of housing, of housing that's affordable in the city? And what should be done about that situation? They, there was a lot of work put into this. The Housing Task Force identified factors, the city's geographic boundaries. So, they're set, there's not a lot of much of the city's built out. The zoning ordinance limits affordable housing supply and often contributes to higher-cost housing. And they figured out that to to have an impact that could change those dynamics, the recommendations were that changes be made to the zoning ordinance and regulations that would support ADUs. Excuse me. So, you've got those, you've got those in the staff letter. And then there are a number of references. You've seen these before. They're, they've been baked into multiple, multiple reports, and the, as well as the guide to ADUs that staff created and put on the website so that people could understand why you're doing all of this, and just what accessory dwelling units are. But there were a number of resources that were used to help you create these regulations. The city attorney did not, how can I put this? City attorney was not the trigger or the impetus, or comments from him were not the impetus for creating this ordinance. However, it was sent to him, but we have not yet got comments back. We do know that the provisions that are in our ordinance are some of the same ones that are in the city of Ann Arbor's, and that was vetted very thoroughly by the attorneys for the city of Ann Arbor, and, and approved. Excuse me. And lastly, and probably one of the most important things is, does this, does this amendment promote implementation of goals and objectives in the master plan? And absolutely, it does. The master plan identifies that accessory dwelling units would foster responsible use of land. Their sustainable use of existing public services, utilities, infrastructures. And it's an overall goal of the city. Your recently updated master plan did envision ADUs in the city as an option to provide a residential environment that would have diverse housing options. But it also recognized in order to, to be able to do that, excuse me, an amendment to the zoning ordinance would be necessary. In the staff memo, you do have three motions. One that allows, that allows you to recommend approval as this has been written. One that allows you to recommend approval to city council, but perhaps you've got some changes that we can identify. And then three would be to just postpone because there's more things you want to work on. I'm ready to take any questions or comments, or we can open up the public hearing if you're ready for that.
This is Tom Phillips. I apologize for being late to the meeting.
Hi, Tom.
I'm back, and thanks for getting started. So, did, did anybody have any preliminary comments or questions for Michelle? Before we open up the public hearing? I have a couple of questions about several of the sections, but I'll, I'll wait until we're a little further into it.
Would you like to take over, Tom?
Sure.
Thank you.
So.
Could you share where you're participating from, real quick?
Oh, yes, I'm participating from Dexter, Michigan.
Thank you.
Tom, I actually do have a couple of questions, but I don't know if now's the time or after the public hearing portion is closed. You tell me.
Let's do it after the public hearing.
Okay.
So, Michelle, you want to go ahead and, we can just go ahead and open the public hearing then?
Yep, go ahead, Tom.
So, let's open the public hearing. It's, we have, somebody have the official time?
7:29.
7:29, thank you. Is there anybody on the, on the call who would like to join the meeting? You can, Mike, you can probably see them raise their hand, or, or if they're joining by phone only, what is it, pound nine?
Star nine.
Star nine. Star nine, thank you. So, we'll give it a minute here.
I can add for you, Tom, and planning commission. I did contact Carrie Patterson and her mother, Kate. They were the people that contacted you back in September with the initial request to consider adding ADUs as a permitted use. They were not, they aren't, to the best of my knowledge, they are not on the call. I did inform them that would be a public hearing. They said they would try to join, but they were very pleased to hear that you, and very thankful that you have gone ahead and are, are considering it to this point.
Very good, thank you.
There are no.
Go ahead.
Hearing nobody on the call, I guess we can go ahead and close the public hearing. And whatever the official time is for that.
7:31.
Very good, thank you. So, I guess we can, if there's, somebody has a motion?
I'll do a motion.
Go ahead.
Pursuant to Section 23.06 of the city of Dexter zoning ordinance together with the information presented by the staff and the input received during the public hearing conducted by the planning commission on June 7, 2021, the planning commission recommends city council approve AP 2020.21-17 text amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow and regulate accessory dwelling units as provided herein.
Thank you, Dustin, as for support?
Support.
Support, Allison Healy. Thank you, Allison. So, open it up for discussion. Chet, did you want to, you have some comments?
Yeah, a couple of general ones. I could be wrong, but it seemed like very early when we were discussing these, there was some, some discussion of conducting a public meeting. And I honestly don't know or even think that that's necessary, but has that gone to the wayside, or am I even incorrect in my recollection?
There were questions in the beginning if this was something that should be a special use and require a public hearing, or if there was just a way that we could notify surrounding neighbors when an accessory dwelling was being proposed. And that's why there's that section, excuse me. Where is it? Where the, there's it's section, it's in the eligibility permits and application section, B3, where the zoning administrator needs to let the adjacent neighbors know that one's proposed, so that people know what's, what's going on, a way of letting them know without creating additional levels of
additional levels of time, cost and bureaucracy.
Okay. My second question is, has to do with enforcement. I have, or the need thereof. I have a friend, an architect friend in Ann Arbor who has an ADU. And her mother lived in it. Which is what everybody, what, what everybody looks forward to or that sort of thing perhaps with their ADU, but her mother passed away. And now, given the pandemic, she uses that as an office and probably will. Though firm will not be having in-house, except or in-office things, except maybe once a week or so. So what happens if this occurs here? No one complains? No one really cares? What is it? Is it, how would that be resolved if someone did complain? Well, I guess it'd be easy to resolve if it did complain, but if, if, if no one complained, then not an issue, I suppose.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I'm understanding if they're complaining that it's not being used as an ADU anymore.
Yeah, but who would complain unless it's a real office and then there's a lot of cars and all of that? Is there?
So if, if somebody isn't using it as an ADU anymore, but is using it as their home office? That's something that they could just get a different permit for. But they could not use it as their business office. Because you're, you're going into that wouldn't, that may not fit with the zoning of the property. Because you couldn't bring a commercial use into a separate structure and be legal within a single family zoning district.
Much like then if I started running a business out of my house, not supposed to do that, but.
You can run a home occupation, you could run, like you could be, you could have your own architectural firm where you're the only person in your business that ever comes to your home. Or you could have, you can't, how can I put it? There's, it's a very narrow structure for operating your home office.
Yeah, a lot of people have home businesses, that's not unusual at all. It's the question of when it, it goes over to a commercial business.
Correct.
That's like, that's the classic daycare conundrum. It's like, when is it a daycare? When, when is it you're babysitting and when is it a daycare facility?
That's a, that's a good comparison, Tom, thank you.
Sure.
So those are just general questions.
Okay.
Actually, Chad's raised something that.
Go ahead, Karen.
Well. Thank you. But no, but part of constructing ADU is you put something over a garage, right? Well, then you're gone above the fourteen feet. You know, height limitation for garages, we still have that, right? And then.
The ADUs aren't subject to those same ones.
No, no, I understand, but then all of a sudden it becomes what? You know, becomes somebody's home office. You, you couldn't right now take your garage and build a home office above it and be within compliance. You know, but you could if you make a living here, right?
So remember, some of the things that we're doing in the zoning ordinance update is allowing for a little more flexibility in the height. So currently, you're right, right now, accessory structures are fourteen feet, period. Cause it only looks at a garage only used as a garage. So I think the changes that you all are looking at in the zoning ordinance update will relieve that issue.
Thank you, Karen. I, I, does anybody else have any comments? I have a couple of things, quick things.
I have just a quick, just wanted to say support with kind of what.
Go ahead, Kyle.
Michelle, just, thanks, Tom. Yeah, just, Chad brings up a good point about, you know, can you convert it to an office later or something? You know, I, I don't, and, and there's an important point about whether it's a business or whether it's just your home business or, you know, once you form an LLC, then does that change it so, you know?
There's no zoning change. It is what it is, it's a residential, it fits within residential.
So sure, so then that, I think whole discussion is kind of coming in with the, with the zoning update that we're, we're looking at with some of the uses and things anyway.
Yeah.
So. So yeah, I think we're doing what the existing zoning will allow us with this.
Right, it's just, it's just another part of the house, really.
Yeah.
So, does anybody else have anything? Couple of quick things. So in section page eleven of one seventy-five. Permit section two. I, I, you know, kind of looking at this as, as a, a part of a house. I guess I'm not comfortable with the idea that, that, so when you get a house designed and built, there isn't anybody that comes out to inspect it every five years to make sure it's still a house and it's not a gas station or a factory or something. And I'm uncomfortable with a couple of sections that we have here that I, I think are are taking this thing to another level that is really unnecessary and burdensome to those people. And I have a permit section two B where somebody builds this ADU and then it's being inspected by somebody coming out to see if they're doing the right thing. I am familiar, I'm familiar with this, this happens in Brighton for live work units where somebody comes out from the government and says, looks at that unit and decides whether the people living there are complying with, with the zoning regulations or not. And then they, if they're not, they send them a summons that they have to leave or a threat or a fine or whatever. And I think that's, that's a very rare communities that do that. And I, and I, I don't like that direction in our ordinance for a couple of these sections. So one of them, I, I would suggest that permit section B two B is a bad idea. The application requirement also on three B. Again, a separate application, they're, they're gonna apply for a zoning. Shoot, sorry about that. They're going to apply for a zoning compliance permit, which I agree with, and they should, that's, that's, you know, it is a slightly unusual structure. So giving it a little more scrutiny than a house, I think is appropriate. Uh, but I think the, the the additional process accessory dwelling unit included in the application. Section three B is unnecessary. And then that would make three C also unnecessary. So I, I think, I think this is really a this should be treated more like somebody who's, who's building a house than something that, that is a a special use. And so those are two things. And then just to finish up on page thirteen of one seventy-five. Public utilities, I would like to know why we care where they get their utilities. So somebody's gonna buy, get utilities, whether it's electrical or whatever, they're gonna have a meter, they're gonna pay for their utilities. And, and maybe they have a separate meter, maybe they don't. But again, I don't see why it's our business, whether in a zoning ordinance, to care where they get their utilities. And Ann Arbor, this is a huge deal because, especially because of sewer and a lot of problems that are unique to Ann Arbor. And I, I'm sure Allison could probably clarify that if she's interested, but I, I don't see why, and, and maybe Allison, you, you could even talk about this, but I, I guess I'm unclear why we care where they get the utilities in a zoning ordinance. That's part of a building permit thing. And then item nine C under design. That it will be designed to protect their neighbor's privacy. Again, that's, I, I think that's a, that's an overreach. I, I think that, you know, when, when somebody builds a house, there's nobody walking around their house saying, well, are you, are you intruding on your neighbor's privacy or not? I think that's excessive and unnecessary as well, but they're, they should be able to dine it just like their neighbor designed it, their neighbor for them designed it. Uh, and they, they figure all that out as they go. I don't think that should be in the ordinance. So Michelle, you want to, somebody have any, you know, want to talk about that or think I'm crazy or?
Allison's got her hand raised, so I think she's going to address some of the, at least one of the comments you made.
And Jim also does, so Allison, you want to go first because your name is, and A starts with an A.
Sure, that works. Yeah, I don't think that it hurts to address utilities and I, and maybe it needs to be clarified that you're talking about the sewer and water utility as opposed to electric or gas or something like that. If we had really strong engineering guidelines and specifications and standards, they could be addressed there, but I'm not really sure that we do. I don't know that we have anybody from O H M or maybe, maybe Megan knows, but if, if it was addressed somewhere, that, that's a question that comes up. The question that's going to come up, somebody that wants to build something that is like this and wants to know what are the requirements? Does it have to be in the zoning ordinance? Maybe not, but it should probably be addressed somewhere.
Wouldn't that be just part of a typical building permit that, that has nothing to do with zoning?
Yes, I can answer that question. In the reference material, this was something that was listed as a best practice that communities identify. Because part of the reason for you, for accessory dwelling units, especially in the context by which this city is considering them is to provide more housing stock in, in a more affordable vein. The, the other thing we have to remember is, excuse me. In order to keep the costs down, any new unit that's created that, that requires a tap in, a new tap into a main, that requires a tap fee. If we don't identify that this can be used through an existing lead that services that principal structure. It, it's ambiguous and it also did not make the superintendent of public services comfortable. He was, he was comfortable with using the existing lead instead of new tapping.
But again, I, I, I see that. I see that as a building permit issue and, and that, and it doesn't say that you may, if you want to, it says you will. So that's a different thing, but thank you, Michelle. Jim, could you, did you have a comment? And then Karen.
I had, I had a question and a comment, and I'll start with the comment. As someone who rents property in the village, I am in favor of the utilities rule there, and I'll tell you why. I could see scenarios where if I have an accessory dwelling unit, I'm going to want to use the existing tap. I could see scenarios where I'm going to want to use a new tap, depending on what I'm building. And I just think clarity is important in these situations because you know, it's not just dealing with the town, it's dealing with utility companies as well. And so I, I think clarity there, whether we're in favor of it against it. And here, here, I think we're giving good clarity that we're pretty much okay with either route. And so I am in favor of that. Michelle, I had a question related to Tom's point about inspections. Just generally, what what value do you see in those inspections? What, what would cause action off of those inspections?
So the biggest concerns were as planning commission and as different people in the public, have you gone, as you've gone through this is, are they going to be kept up? Or are they going to not be kept up? Because as rental properties, some landlords don't, even if they live on site. And the inspection process is kind of twofold. It makes sure the property is being used properly. But that it's also being taken care of and not creating the nuisance that, that planning commissioners and the public have provided feedback about. That's why we've made it a, a five-year period. And if there have been no complaints by neighbors, I mean, insubstantive, things where we're having to take enforcement action, then there isn't an inspection. We know everything's going along just fine. It's that carrot and stick approach that you all seem to be okay with.
You know, I, I would say I was okay with it until Tom raised it and I started thinking about it. And that's why we do this, right?
Absolutely.
But we have plenty of rental properties in town right now that are not inspected for upkeep.
You're, you're absolutely right. But remember, the council is looking at rental inspection as a policy. And that's why short-term rentals have that inspection requirement.
Shouldn't we have residential home inspections too then? I mean, Jim's home hasn't been inspected since he moved in, and I don't know who's, who's.
Anybody's talking about home inspections at this point.
Realistically, I'm about to get rid of my basement tenant in my home, he's joining the Marines.
I heard that, congratulations.
Very glad to move him along. Since he's been breaking my rule of no food down there. You know, Michelle, I, I, I think you're, I think you're I think you're inadvertently hurting your cause because what you've now caused me to do is reconsider whether we should have had those, those inspections on short-term rentals. Tom, I'm with you, if you can get an amendment, I'll vote for it.
Thank you, Jim. Karen, far away.
Okay, well, on that point, I, I'll vote for it as well because I just don't think we need to to, to inspect those. I, I don't, I don't, I think that's a, number one, it's a, it's a job that we, is, you know, we're taxing staff, the authority has so much to do. And, you know, and also because we don't, I mean, if city council turns around and says, okay, yep, we're gonna start inspecting all my own properties in the city, then I guess look again, but for now, I would, I would leave that out. Just to the point about the design standard and the privacy, we did that, and I remember this because we reduced the setback. The setback now is only five feet. At least for detached and there's some, there was even more something to it. So you really could be sterile to your neighbor's, you know, house. So that's, that was why we did that. It wasn't, and I, I, I think that that's a good thing. The, the, the issue about moves a number, the application three C. No, three, well, B. I think even, I mean, we're doing a remodel and we had to get zoning compliance form. So I, I think that's standard practice, isn't it? When a house is being built, that's one form they do get. It's not, you know, permitted use or not, that's part of, part of the, the process. And so I don't have any problem with that. I do agree on following the inspections though, and I think private design issue is a good one and I'm not sure how it's supposed to be, but you, you will, you know, we already do see the setbacks.
Yeah, I, I guess, Karen, what, there's already a zoning compliance permit. What is, and maybe Michelle, you can jump in on this, what is? What is, that's under two B is kind of like saying you need a permit, which I think is fine for zoning compliance, that makes sense. But then the application requirement three B basically says you gotta pay for it. Okay, I got that.
And it has to follow the regulations and the ordinance.
Right, yeah, I don't think it's.
Okay.
Get those.
Okay, I got you. So B and C are just in support of A, essentially. Okay, gotcha. Okay, all right, cool. So I, I guess I withdraw my objection to the sections in three, but I back to Allison's point about, and Jim both comments about the utilities. I guess it, it doesn't, I think you both said that it's a nice thing to be able to do, but that's not what this says. Section eight on page thirteen says you will do that. So, and, and to your point, Michelle, about. Yeah, well, it doesn't matter. The point about economics, I would rather have my contractors tell Yeah, well, it doesn't matter. The point about economics, I would rather have my contractors tell me what's more economical rather than the zoning administrator when it comes to the best way to build my utilities.
Tom, if if we don't have this, that they can tie, that they must tie into, first of all, it says that they must have, they must be served by water and sewer, public water, public sewer. Excuse me, and they need to connect to
Connect, uh huh.
To the lead, basically, that serves the single-family principal dwelling. And that they can't have separate services. Because if we don't say that, then they would have to have separate services and then they will have to pay eight thousand dollars for that tap in.
Well, what if there's a condition where that's a bargain?
Where would it be a bargain?
I don't know. I I I'm looking at this as a construction thing in a zoning ordinance. And we talk about that a lot, which is, we seem to love to pull the building part of the development process into our zoning ordinance for some reason. I I don't quite understand that because it's already covered. Jim and Allison and Jim, you both have your hands up. So Jim, I think you were up first.
Mine was mine was just lingering, so I will I will lower it.
Okay, Allison.
So I would agree with Michelle. It it's never going to be a bargain to have to pay tap in fees. But what you might want to consider allowing is the choice between tapping existing utilities and allowing them to tap separately if for whatever reason they want to.
Sure, that's that's kind of what I'm saying too. Thank you. Chat, did you have something?
Yes, right along those same lines. Why doesn't, why don't, why isn't the wording just changed to all ADUs must be served by municipal water and municipal sanitary sewer? ADAs may be connected to the water and wastewater utilities rather than shell. And then the choice is theirs. Most people will do that, they'll tap into the the existing services there, I believe, just because it's it's got to be cheaper.
I agree, and I I think that serves Jim's point too, which is transparency is good that we're we're going to permit that and there isn't going to be any problem because I I could see some people being concerned that they're worried about their services not being sufficient or the tapping in would be a problem. So I agree on the transparency side for sure. Did anybody else have any comments? Thank you, Chat.
Yep.
I can take the, in the second sentence where it says ADU shall be connected to wa- water and wastewater utilities of the principal structure. I could put that may if you want.
Yeah, I I think it's Dustin's motion. So we have two things, Dustin, well, I guess there's that one, the design pub utilities, there's the permit to be, and there's the design privacy one. Are you are you have any interest in amending your motion to a committee any of those?
I I I understand what you're saying, but I actually agree with everything as written. So no, I'm not going to amend my motion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, did anybody else have any other comments? Okay, can we have a roll call vote then, please?
Okay, Hill.
I, yes, if it's going to go this way, but I do like the what we discussed about as amendments to this.
If you turn it down, then there'll be a new a new motion probably.
I'm I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to deny then and entrust that those changes. So no.
Roberts.
No.
Haley.
No.
Hubbard.
No.
Marsh. Wise.
Yes.
Phillips.
No.
Courtney, Carti. Was that a no?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion fails.
So did anybody want to make another motion? Remember, we can always table it. Oh, Karen, I'm sorry, I I didn't see your physical hand.
Number two is where I headed. So pursuant to section twenty-three oh six of the City of Dexter zoning ordinance, together with the information presented by staff and input received during the public hearing conducted by the Planning Commission on June seventh, two thousand twenty-one, the Planning Commission recommends that the City Council approve AP twenty twenty point twenty-one dash seventeen text amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow and regulate accessory dwelling units as provided herein, subject to the following changes. In point eight, the word shall shall be turned to be changed to may and section section to, I want to get rid of the inspection, so it's where I'm heading.
Yeah, to be.
To be shall be removed from from the ordinance.
Is there any support? Thank you, Karen.
Okay, I got that. And Kyle, you supported?
I missed that. Thank you, Kyle. Kyle's support. Is there any additional discussion? Thank you. Let's have a roll call vote.
Okay, Phillips.
Yes.
Haley.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wise.
No.
Carti.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Marsh.
Motion carried. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, thank you, Planning Commission. That's that's the way we're supposed to do it. So thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the next agenda item, which is prearranged participation. There's none, item five. Item six, non-arranged participation. Is there anybody on the on the phone or online who would, who has any comments?
I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Thank you. Seeing none, we'll close item six, open item seven, reports of officers. I have nothing to report. Matt didn't say anything that mentioned anything to me. I don't know about you, Michelle, that he might have. And then he he did send his regrets that he couldn't make the meeting. He was, he's, he has a long meeting in Ann Arbor that that conflicted with this one, so. Planning Commissioners and Council, anybody have any report, ex officio council members? Does anybody have anything to report?
Tom, I have a question.
Fire away, Jim.
Why I noticed that the City Council rather decisively voted down our recommendation on Second Street. And I was just curious, because I didn't attend the meeting, how that conversation went and and perhaps if there's any direction generally from the City Council to the Planning Commission that we should consider in the future.
That is a good question. I don't know that there's any direction right now. I would just say that the majority of us felt like taking a step back and looking at the corridor in general was a good idea. There was no real immediate reason to move forward with the text amendment. I will say that in, you know, if you play the video back, I'm not, you know, council member Michelle said that he, in his experience dealing with self-storage, just doesn't believe they fit in the city at all. So there was that opinion voiced in the discussion. And, you know, what I said in the last meeting, and I will clarify one thing, you know, and you and I had a back and forth about this at at the Planning Commission meeting when we were discussing this. And I said in the City Council meeting, I wanted to make sure that I corrected myself. I in no means did I mean that I wanted to control what the property owner was doing. That was a me misspeaking in the stress of the moment and, you know, I I just restated that I just wanted to look at it as we look at the zoning ordinance and look at at things in the bigger picture. So that's kind of how that went. I don't know if that helps.
No, it does. Thank you.
Can I just ask, was there a lot of public participation?
Go ahead, Karen.
Yeah, I mean, we saw that we had some of the same same residents voicing the same concerns. But yeah, people did show up. And so I think that was part of it too. That people were there speaking to us, which we don't always do.
Thank you. Well, cool. Thank you very much. Thank you, Wa. Committee reports.
Well, hold on though. Actually, I have a.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yes, your ex officio. Fire away.
Um, just some things that some other things that we've been working on since we last met, but I think you guys would be interested in knowing about. We did interview three candidates in person to put the city manager position, which I'm sure you guys all know. We have Justin Breers, our interim city manager right now, so he was one of the candidates. And then we had two external candidates. It was a good day, learned a lot. We haven't, we had a brief discussion about it at the last council meeting. But there wasn't a clear consensus, so I'm not entirely sure what next steps are. I know we, you know, we had the subcommittee or the 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 committee, search committee, so perhaps they're going to meet again to try to figure out what our next steps are in terms of moving forward. But, you know, there are some of us ready to move forward and some of us not quite ready to move forward, so we've got to walk the paces on that one. Speaking of that, same sort of thing holds for the City Council vacancy, although with that one, we have actually split the vote on two candidates of the five that applied, so we have not filled that vacancy, so we are still sitting with six on council. Hopefully we can move forward on that relatively quickly. And then the other thing is the thirty-five fifteen Broad Street property, which is the potential city offices, we did approve on a five to one vote the bond issuance for the two point five million dollars in bonds, which is not, that is above the purchase price of the property. That does build in some room for improvements that would be needed, including an elevator. So there's that, and I don't know if anyone has any questions about any of that, but that's that's what I got.
Awesome. Thank you, Wa.
I should weigh in on the ZBA. Didn't have a meeting.
Yeah.
Listen to the report. Why I have a question for you, that last one, the the property, is that the new proposed new city hall building that you were talking about?
Yeah, sorry, I don't know. I'm sure that I thought I said that, but I guess I didn't. Yeah, it's the proposed city offices.
Right. Hey, way to get rid of that Dexter Dexter days too. That was going to be a problem, so.
We did not do that.
Boy, the newspaper sure thinks you did.
Well, you can watch the recording back if you would like to see what happened.
Okay, thank you. Awesome. So committee report, committee reports. I have no committee reports.
Got the zoning update committee, but is that?
Comes later on the agenda.
Yeah, 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 we, yeah, we have a big section of that, so thank you, Kyle. Michelle, community development reports.
Okay, I'll keep this brief. Do you have any comments or questions about my report?
No.
Okay, then I don't think there's anything else for me to say.
Awesome. Thank you. Not that awesome that you're not.
I know what you meant. It's okay.
Well, your boy, your doctor may think is awesome you didn't give a report. So communications, we have none. Well, let's close reports of officers, item seven, open communications, we have none. Old business, Michelle, I want to introduce that one.
So there's going to be a lot to digest over the these next three items, so. Let's set the stage. Megan and Mike will go, as well as the people that are on the subcommittee, will go over the specifics for form-based code, both the first review and the second review. What I'm going to deal with you on is one of the questions that came up as it pertains to minimum lot size and whether it's the form-based code or, you know, or not. Currently, the minimum lot area and width in an R one A or R one B district, even the Village Residential District, is a minimum of seventy-eight hundred square feet for the lot and sixty-foot lot width. There was a suggestion that maybe we should allow something smaller. The minimum lot area. Let me see where I'm at in this. The comment was made, you know, could we reduce it to some smaller width and smaller area? And there wasn't consensus on the subcommittee for if that should be, and if so, what should it be? And so based on the subcommittee's rules, this issue comes to you, the Planning Commission, to talk about and provide some guidance. So what we did, what staff did is we put together a map that shows in just a second so I can get the map. It identifies the existing parcels in the old village. They're designated VR for Village Residential or the R one B. And okay, so these are, these are parcels, what we were trying to show is parcels that might be eligible for a land division, so.
Michelle, just one quick sec point before we get too far in it. Is this something that we really should have Matt attending the this meeting over? Because this is like a big part of what we've been working on for a while.
It could be helpful to have him, but what I don't, what I, what we can't do right now is we can't delay the decision just because of that. One of the things I did tell Matt is to please review everything and let me know if he had any any thoughts or comments or questions. He did not provide any, so it may not be something that he does or doesn't want input on. But I I do need the, I do need Planning Commission to at least have a discussion, even if you're not going to make a decision. Okay. So parcels that are in our, the two districts VR and R one B are required to have seventy-eight hundred square feet and a lot area and sixty feet of road frontage. So to determine how many parcels in these two zoning districts might be eligible for a split, they have to have at least five thousand, I'm sorry, fifteen thousand square foot area and a road frontage of a hundred and twenty feet or more. And the map that you've got in your packet shows in blue those parcels that have fifteen thousand six hundred square feet of area and at least a hundred and twenty feet of road frontage. There are thirty-nine parcels currently that may be eligible to be split to meet the current regulation of a minimum seventy-eight hundred square foot lot area with a sixty-foot road frontage. But we were also able to determine that if it was reduced to allow a minimum area of of forty-nine hundred fifty square feet or even forty-five hundred square feet with lot widths of forty-nine and a half feet or forty-five feet respectively, how many parcels could you get? Well, obviously, again, you have to double the square footage of the lot. Well, obviously, again, you have to double the square footage of the lot and double the road frontage. So there currently would be, there would be seventy-eight parcels out of three hundred and forty-one that would have a minimum lot area of ninety-nine hundred square feet and a lot width of ninety-nine. Um, and then there are a hundred and twenty-five parcels out of three hundred and forty-one that have a minimum lot area of nine thousand square feet and a lot width of ninety. So that kind of gives you an idea of, based on current zoning, how many land divisions could create smaller lots that meet our ordinance currently. Um, as well as lots that might be able to be reduced in size and how many potential new parcels, you know, you could create. Again, this is potentially eligible. There are state requirements for depth to width ratio. There's also existing structures on lots, and those would have, would impact where a property could be divided. This does not look at dividing parcels horizontally so that they'd have alley frontage. This is only looking perpendicular uh so that they have street frontage. Um, so it it's just out there for a discussion. Um, and I'd like to know what your thoughts are. And the subcommittee would like to know what your comments, concerns, questions might be.
There's uh, thank you, Michelle. The the does, do any of the planning commissioners have uh any comments about that?
Yeah, I'll say something if that's okay.
Sure.
So, um, yeah, I brought, I'm the one who brought this up yeah, in the last um subcommittee. So um, I have to say, Michelle, great job on this um write-up and graphic. I think you've done a good job of encapsulating kind of what I was trying to say. And and I think you bring up the, you know, I think it's a real, it's a real question. And and I'm glad that it's in front of everybody to consider. I mean, it's not the kind of thing I suppose we have to decide now, but it's one of those things that I've I've definitely noticed. And if you look at the math, there's a lot of ninety-nines. I I personally live on a, I think it's forty-five um, lot myself. So I have uh in inside knowledge of what that's like. Um, and it's not bad. I mean, it's a perfect little lot size. And so the other thing is that, you know, one of the zoning update things, they say is go to your kind of favorite area of town and then look at what they do with, what they did with the zoning and what the built environment is there. And the place that I referenced was on Central Street between Fifth and Fourth. There's that block of of homes there and that I believe that the predominant lot width there is this forty-five um, forty-five width. So it's not an unprecedented thing in the town. And it actually makes sense with how things are subdivided. We see so many ninety-nine foot wide lots. So then, you know, if you're doing a strict fifty-fifty split, forty-nine and a half. But if there's buildings there or something, you know, a a forty-five gives you a little wiggle room um either way. And then I think a lot of these are in our, our, you know, the, I forget what the designation is now, VR one or it's our, you know, our denser residential neighborhood, the historic neighborhoods. So anyway, I guess that's a long way of saying it. It looks pretty good. And I support this and happy to talk about it, so.
Thank you, Kyle. Uh, Chuck, you have your hand up. Wanna go ahead?
Yeah, in fact, that answers uh one of my questions. And that is where, where in the city are there lots that are that narrow and what do they look like? And I know exactly what they look like there, so.
Let me make a correction real quick, please, Chuck. So um, the 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 lots on that block are forty-nine and a half feet wide. Those ones that have already been split over the years. We've looked that up.
As opposed to forty-five.
As opposed to forty-five, correct.
Well, still, it's it's pretty darn close.
Right. You're absolutely right.
Realize there was any in town, quite honestly. Now, one of the things I do notice about those, they all have alley access. And um, that that perhaps is a piece of the criteria that uh you can get at them from both sides. Park on the street and at least have your garage on the alley or something like that on a narrow lot. I don't know. Um, my other thing that I noticed is um, and was mentioned, that splitting lots depends on where the structures are as well on those lots. And our property is immediately adjacent to the um, the property, which is at the corner of Inverness and Fourth. Um, we're the second one in there. And ours is really two lots in the sense that that's how Judge Dexter had platted it. And that's true for the house right next to it as well. And um, our neighbors there. And his house, boy, I swear, it might even straddle. Maybe it doesn't. Um, you know, straddle those two original lots, which now show as one, when in fact, as I say, originally planted there, too, as is ours. So yes, structure makes a big difference. And I know you mentioned that as part of this. That would have to be evaluated on a lot by lot basis. So that was my comments.
Thank you, Chuck. Uh, Wa, you got your hand up?
I I'm and I'm pulling up this, trying to figure out, just as a point of reference. Michelle, do you know how wide my lot is? Because that could speak to the question of not having alley access. Because I feel like mine's pretty narrow and I don't have that.
Right. I'm pulling up the map right now.
And I was trying to do that, too. I just.
It just takes a little bit to load it. Um, and I can answer, then I can answer both chats.
I says lot frontage. I'm on the assessor. It says fifty-five feet. So mine's fifty-five and it's. I mean, I don't, I don't know. Maybe that's, so I guess it's not a great comparison, quite a bit outside of that.
Right. So you've got an interesting situation. Um, um, Kyle has a, has a narrow lot. He doesn't have alley access, nor does he have a driveway. Um, um, but for him, it works. Um, aren't a lot of lots in the city like Kyle's? Um, now Wa, you're on.
Well, my, I only brought it up because I'm right behind all those houses we were just referencing.
Mm-hmm.
So. Because I'm on, I'm on Dover to come forth and fifth.
Right, right. Yours is, yours is um, um, is a little bit more, uh, it's it's wider than forty-nine and a half feet. Um, because I can see the um, original lot lines.
I mean, the the county website or whatever the tax assessor website says it's fifty-five.
Um, then Chuck, you had mentioned your property and your neighbor's property. Um. And your neighbor's house is it um, the the original lot line two parcels goes through a portion of of the house. Um, yours is your primary structure is on one lot and your garage is on a different lot.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, if anybody's curious about what their property looks like, they can go on like the Washed On G G I S and and uh, it'll show all the lot splits and everything. So we could, we could have like a special session on that if anybody's interested.
I didn't mean to chase down this rabbit hole. I just lived right behind this. So I wondered if it was relevant. It's not. Move on.
Karen has her hand up. Karen, you wanna go ahead?
Um, the only thing I that going back to that block is the uh, that none of those lots do have front access. And, you know, they all, you know, their cars are all parked in back or sometimes they're parked in front. But it raises the question to me is, um, I, I, and I'm, the context, I can't remember what context now because I feel like a lot of these things are coming at once. But making more use of our existing on-street parking. And that right now, we have for residences, there's, I believe, you have to have some onsite parking. You know, if you're gonna put some, you know, build a new house or something like that. You can't just get, you know, I mean, Kyle's houses would, in that respect, be, I guess, non-conforming. But that that's something that we would have to look at and possibly change because things don't necessarily back. You know, everybody doesn't necessarily back up to an alley. It works very well for those houses, those four that are, if the two on either end are, you know, Judge you know, Dexter plotted that, platted them that way. And the other two, the the two that were in between were split. And that's how they created that, I believe. That's certainly what it looks like. But they don't, you know, they, there's no room for, you know, and my lot is sixty feet and it is driveway to driveway. That's it. That's what we've got room for, really.
Great.
That's fine. Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, Jim, uh, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I did. Um, I just wanted to say I've lived on a fifty-foot wide lot. I I think it's very doable. I'm generally in favor of this. Um. I don't think we should mandate that they be on the alley, but I will say it strikes me as a much more workable option if you are on the alley. But uh, since we're seeking feedback here, my feedback is I would be fine with fifty or forty-nine and a half or whatever.
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, I I agree with that as well. I I think, uh, you know, one of the things, I was on the housing committee and I think Karen was too. Um, and you know, we basically, one of the few things that we can do as a a community is offer flexibility to people when it comes to uh housing options. And certainly this is uh consistent with that, I would say. Although when it comes to like efficiency of a structure and stuff, like we talked about last time, I don't know that it does that, but certainly uh flexibility is not a bad thing, I don't think. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate.
Thank you. Um, I think we're out of, were we out of order there on that item?
Um, somewhat, uh, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn this over to Megan and um uh, and Mike to uh give you the zoning ordinance um updates, if that's okay.
Absolutely. So we're gonna cover items one and three then next. Thank you, Michelle. Megan and Mike?
Um, well, the um, the zoning committees, uh, subcommittees met twice um since um you last met. Um, and we began to go over form-based code items, um, looking at um the different districts, um, building forms, street types and site types, um, and also uses. And so those are the building blocks of the um, the building blocks of 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 the form-based districts themselves. We included in your packet was the um presentation um that we gave. And if you look through that, it, there's, we give examples of how those different items would apply to three different sites. Um, we're still working, I think, after tonight, we've come to some resolution on the site types and building types. Um, but how um uses are presented? Um, we still, there was some feedback that maybe these big use groups is are not um the best way to do it. Um, so we're looking back and putting um to have a use table instead in each district. Um, Mike, did you have anything else to add?
I think that was a, that that gave, that was about everything in overview. And if anyone has questions, we can give more details.
I can't believe that took an hour and a half for us to do.
But, yeah. You're looking at a lot of detail. We asked you a lot of questions. Um, and I'm sure once we bring the whole text to this group, there'll be lots of questions as well.
It's a very complicated section, too.
Right.
My first look was holy cow.
Yeah, it's not done yet, so.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
I, well, I should have raised my hand and I apologize. This is Chuck.
Oh, go ahead, Chuck.
I did have a couple of kind of overview things that when I was going through this. Um. There's, I don't see any mention in here, and maybe it's not the appropriate pace, place for it. But um, requirements, sidewalks, et cetera. I don't see any reference to ADA um access requirements. Um, I don't see any at all. Now, maybe I missed it. Maybe this is.
That's in the building code, so you don't have to worry about that.
Okay.
It's also in our engineering standards.
Also, second question was um, street trees are required at um, in most of the areas, but not um, up through Form C. Um, is that for any particular reason? I think that's residential or something. I think it goes that.
Um, so the um, because of Form C, so Form, I think A, B, and C were um, single family. One was, we originally had two types of single family. Now we only have one, so mansion, house duplex. Um, those, because of their nature, because they're a one-family or two-family dwelling, when they're built primarily, we couldn't apply those landscaping standards because it would be site plan. Um, and most of the street trees you see anyway are in the right-of-way, and those are the responsibility of the um city. So um, that's the reason for not having those with those building forms. And the other building forms most likely would be built on a vacant parcel of land in a larger development that would go through site plan review.
Okay, so they're, the the standards are for basically for new, new projects, new development.
Uh, yes, all of it. And there is a section in there, which I encourage you to read, that um, it says who it applies to. So it's, it's anybody who's going through site plan. Um, and then also there is a section that is basically says that if the design standards, um, the setbacks don't fit, they can ask the planning commission for a waiver. So anything in the form-based codes where it, they would be asking for what it would be typically a variance, instead at site plan review, you would look at it as the planning commission and issue a waiver.
Um. Couple more things. One of them, we were discussing ADOs. Are they, how are they handled within this? Where and how? I I didn't see them mentioned specifically, again, sort of that's in there based, but.
Yeah, um, so when we do this more specific use table, um, they'll be called out by use. But also in the last edition, um, of, in the last round of edits on the Form-Based Article eleven to house and duplex, I I know, so just to the form, the building form, house, we added a footnote, and then we're gonna need to add another footnote um, that specifically refers to the footnote added was about the height of the ADU. Um, and then there'll need to be a footnote added in house under, there's a, it's in the left, right-hand corner. It says accessory buildings. Um, we'll need to add a note that um, those two that are the maximum of two does not include an ADU. So they'll be handled within. And also I want to stress, and I did this, I said this at the subcommittee, all your general rules still apply. So all your general rules on accessory dwelling units or home-based businesses still apply, even if it's in a form-based code, a form-based district.
Okay. And last but not least, one of the things that I brought up at some point in time, and I still think it's very, very valid and pertinent to address it in some fashion. And that's what last year, what we have learned from last year, um, the pandemic year. How does that affect the form-based code, if it does at all? And specifically, when you talk about live work, we know a lot more people are going to be less traditional lit, live work. In other words, they'll simply be working from home as opposed to my always, my concept of live work was you live upstairs and your business is downstairs. Well, now it's more of a mix and you know it's gonna be a lot more of that occurring. So I'm just curious.
So that goes, that goes back to your home-based business, your, your home-based occupation or home-based business regulations. So that would be one level. And then the live work, as you've defined it, if you, and and I know when um, that was added to the zoning ordinance, you went through, the planning commission went through quite a bit of um definitions. That live work um doesn't necessarily need to be someone, the person who's living is working in the other side. Um, or working in the, working in the bottom and living on the top. Um, so like you have a house that's used as a yoga studio right now, um, but it might have some living area on top. Um, and I know at one point in time, the, the family lived there who was doing it. But they could also now, under your current regulations, and Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, they could rent that as an apartment and have the yoga studio there. Um, and that, that would be the house. So that live work um doesn't necessarily mean that the person who's living in the residence is working in the attached unit. Um, but it it could, but I think it's a degree of. And you already have it in your ordinance, it's a degree of intensity. And one of the things that um. Planning Commissioner Roberts brought up um, in the subcommittee was that also that maybe some performance standards. Need to ride along with um, or be incorporated into these form-based districts. To make sure the intensity in each place is appropriate. Cause what's appropriate individual residential house may be different than what's appropriate in the um, downtown and house.
Yeah, and as, as also somebody who's on that committee, I would say one of our challenges with the planning commission is going to be clear as to what. What, what our scope is proposing to change and what is staying the same, because. Much of, you know, much of the ordinance is, is staying the same. Is untouched by this and I think that's something the planning commission and the public are going to need to, to understand clearly. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I, I was just gonna say it to support what you were saying, Tom, we're just using a different administrative tool via zoning. Um, to do the same thing, hopefully to get a better quality. Uh, to maintain the quality and maintain the historic feature. Um, because if a building burnt down, burned down, we'll be able to reconstruct it in the same manner um, and comply with the zoning.
Thank you. So uh, my, my uh, microphone cut out for a second. I might have missed something you said, Megan. Are, are, are we gonna go over this tonight or, or what's the plan there?
I, I mean, if, if you have time, I can go through the presentation that I went through with the um. With, with the, the subcommittee two weeks ago. If that would be helpful.
I think um, the, the big, the discussion topic that we wanted to bring to the commission tonight was about the lot splits, which we discussed earlier. Give this brief overview, um, we could get into any uh, topic in more detail if anyone wants to, but I think we've. We just wanted to give an update tonight.
Okay, cool, I, I, that's fine with me. Thank you. Okay, um.
Let me just ask one question real quick. Um, planning commission, I'm gonna say the same thing to you that I said to the um, to the subcommittee. You all need to be very comfortable with this. It's a lot to digest, so. You've, you've got to do your homework by reading every, everything and coming prepared. And if you've got questions, please do not hesitate to ask. The, um, the plan, uh, subcommittee is gonna meet again on June twenty first. Because we do not have a ZBA meeting and then they'll meet again on um, before the July PC meeting. And that's so that they are. Crystal clear on what this form-based code districts. Going to be drafted for you and the use districts. Um, so please, if you've got any questions. Um, even if you get them after tonight, send them to me or Mike or Megan, but don't, don't hesitate, please.
And just to that point, you know, when we do go through this, um. I will try to, uh, and I'm sure the other, uh, those o- other folks around the committee. We'll try to point out areas uh, briefly that were kind of controversial. Uh, where that's appropriate, so it won't just be a. Uh, Megan and Mike just, you know, going through this, uh. Just, you know, for, for an hour or two or whatever it's gonna take, but uh. We'll try to um, give you some background as we go and into, and talk about how we came to some of those decisions.
Excellent, thank you.
Sure, Dustin, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say, I talked to Michelle about, a little bit about this earlier before everyone was on, that. You know, for me personally, looking at the form base and going through it, it's a little, it's a different way of thinking. About the ordinances that. Really kind of surprised me, like, I'm like, oh, you know, and especially like when Megan, at the, the meeting, you're like. Use comes last and I was like, what? You know, so, but, but it. It's really. It's definitely a switch for me that I've had to go, wow, this is something that I really need to, I, I agree with Michelle, like. You really need to have a comprehension of, of how this works, so I just want to put that out there.
Awesome, thank you, Dustin. Um, we, we have a. Our uh, screen here is still on the main, same spot on the agenda, so. Use your imaginations here. Oh, thank you, uh, let's uh, close old business then, go on to uh, new business, which is. None, item ten, item eleven, uh. You want to go through uh, proposed business, uh, new business? Michelle, item eleven?
And so um, the care to cure plan has come back, but it's not coming back as a uh, preliminary. They're coming back as a combined site plan review. Um, they've made some substantial changes. So. The Millennium Place final site plan could be coming to you. Um, I got a call from the engineer working on the plan as well as the developer. And it's a possibility that that could be on your July agenda. Um, we're gonna have a little discussion regarding Second Street. In your master plan, you've set forth looking at that corridor a number of years out. Considering all that's come up. Um, um, over the last few months. The question's going to be, do you want to move that um, look at seven, Second Street up? Um, do you think we need to amend the master plan? For the future land use of Second Street is specifically certain parcels. Um, just an, an overall all discussion. And then the last thing is another review of the sub, by the subcommittee.
Very good. Thank you, Michelle. Uh, let's close item eleven, item twelve, citizens wishing to address the committee, the commission?
But can I say something?
Oh, absolutely, I didn't see your hand there.
And I just wanted to make sure that, that, you know, you didn't miss it before we adjourned. Um, I just want to say, can I clarify again, and I will get better at this, you guys, but. What I said in my report about us voting down to council vacancy applicants was not accurate. We split the vote, so the motion failed. We didn't, we didn't reject any applicant, we just split the vote.
Oh, you said that.
That's the exact same thing that happened with Dexter Day. We did have a full council at that time, but one member was absent, so it wasn't us voting it down, it was us splitting the vote.
I see, thank you very much for clarifying. Awesome, thank you. So uh, any other citizens wishing to uh, address the commission? Seeing none, we have a motion to adjourn. Sport, sport, Dustin?
Dustin was second.
Thank you.
Okay, it's closed.
All right, thank you, everybody. Yeah, I'm sorry for being late.
Thank you all, good night.